Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board. It's Monday, September 22nd, and we are at the River Street Firehouse. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce the board. To my far left is Tom Jacobs, Michael Keane.
Hello.
Sharon Brush, Vice Chair. I'm Greg Van Houten, Chair. James Carroll, Justin Corcoran, John McFadden, our Town Manager, Stu Hurd, and Linda Bermuda is recording. First item is minutes from the September 8th, 2014 meeting. So I have a motion to accept this.
So moved.
Motion, I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. Second set of minutes from the September 15th meeting. Do I have a motion to accept?
Move, they be accepted.
Motion, second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. The next item is warrants. Start with John McFadden. Do you have any questions on the warrants this week, John?
I do not.
Okay.
Nothing from either.
Jim?
No, sir.
I do not either. Sharon?
No.
Michael?
307-859, the pumper with change order, 70K in change.
What page?
307-859.
And what page, Michael?
Oh, I just take the numbers down. It's fairly far down.
Page 10.
We have a page number, Michael?
I'd have to page through my notes, and I did not take the pages up or down as I looked.
Page 10.
Yeah, you should find on here, is it $70,320?
That's the one.
Yeah, that is essentially the down payment that we agreed to with the new rescue pumper truck.
Okay.
It is basically on its way. Hopefully, we'll arrive here within the next week or so, and so we needed to have this check ready in order to begin the payment process.
Okay. And one more question. Shortly after that one, 307-866, so it's about seven numbers down from there. There's a Veemers unfunded liability. Is that our unfunded liability to that policy, or is it a ... could you talk a little about that?
Yes, when we switched, now many years ago, 10 years ago, when we switched from Mass Mutual and the Employee Pension Plan to the Vermont Municipal Employee Retirement System, we had an unfunded liability which Mass Mutual would accept because we're a municipality. Veemers, on the other hand, did not, and we were required, under law, to pay back that past liability over 30 years.
Sure. Do you by any chance know what Veemers' own total unfunded liability is?
It's very small. They have been running a surplus in the municipal retirement system for a number of years.
Thank you. That's it.
Tom? Nothing. Okay, I have nothing. Warrants are all set. Do we have any citizens we'd like to address the Select Board? Lyle?
My name's Lyle Westcount from Bennington. I have a retraction to make, and I do apologize. It was an oversight. The last meeting on the 15th, I said that the criminal was on house arrest. I meant to say he was on probation, but the fact still remains. He gets arrested one more time. He's looking at life without parole as an habitual offender. The second thing I got here regarding the brother and sister duel that keep renting to criminals, starting on September 10th.
What are you talking about, Lyle?
No. Don't ask that.
September 10th, 7:42 PM, cops were at 326 Pleasant Street, apartment number 7. Male kept female in another apartment, said he had a machete and threatened her. 8:00 PM, they were at 308 Pleasant Street. Didn't say what they were there for, but they were still there. Then we go down to the 12th. 4:37 PM, 326 Pleasant Street, male was arrested. Didn't say what he's arrested for, but he was arrested from 326 Pleasant Street. 8:36 PM, 308 Pleasant Street, cops at apartment number 4. 9:37 PM, 326 Pleasant Street, cops in probation and parole responded there. Didn't say what they were there for, but it means that he's got a parolee in there that's acting up. 9:13, 4:16 PM, 308 Pleasant Street, apartment number 4. Didn't say what they were there for, but they were there. This is why we need the mandatory criminal background check to cut down. Plus, I gave Greg Van Houten one paper that had more of them at them two addresses. I don't remember how many it was, so I'm not going to quote it, but you have that paper. But this is proof that they're constantly at them two apartments, buildings, all the time, and it's putting the police officers in danger every time they have to go because the criminal knows they're looking at more time. That's why I'm asking you guys to put that criminal background check and fine them $10,000 if they don't evict them before we have someone dead. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Lyle. Here. Jim?
I'm here tonight because I never got any answer on ... I assume that I asked a question at the special meeting you had on the amount of money that the subsidized housing project pays per unit. Did you ever get an answer on that?
How much they ... how much the ... how much Shires pays?
I've disclosed that I charge $850 a month for a three-bedroom unit, and I never got any answer. I left it, and I thought I asked a question. What do they pay?
What do the renters ...
What do they charge for rent?
What do they charge for rent?
Their rents are based on a sliding scale based on income. They're ...
Do we know what that is? Do you have any idea what that is?
I don't know what it is, but they base it at 30 ... their goal is 33% of income in the range of their target audience. So it can be different for the same apartment for different renters.
So basically, you don't know what they charge?
I don't know what they're charging.
During the first presentation, there were some numbers out there. I can't remember what they were exactly, but I thought it was between $600 and $800.
Yeah, there were some examples.
I've heard rumors of $800.
John Broderick, right there. Why don't we ask him? John? Can you provide an answer?
Yeah, please.
Hi again, folks. John Broderick from Shires Housing. Actually, the rents that we charge for development like this are set largely by the different ... the various funders, because there's ... there are different funders target different income groups.
What do you mean different funders?
We don't base it ...
What do you mean?
Because, as you know, low-income housing tax credit program, home program, community development block grant program all have different levels that they're targeting. And we charge roughly between $600 and $800, some a little bit higher, some a little bit lower, based on the guidelines that are set by the various funders. And sometimes funders have one or more units in the various buildings that we have. So it's complicated, but, you know, between $600 and $800 is roughly what we charge.
I'm still not clear on what you mean by funders. What does that mean?
Vermont Housing Finance Agency provides funding to our developments through tax credits. Vermont Community Development Program provides us with community development block grant funds. This is what we're here to discuss. The Vermont Housing Conservation Board provides funding for these developments, and they also provide home funds. So there's four different funding streams that all go into this kind of a development, and they're all a little bit different.
Another question, just to follow up with that. Would Mr. Gully or other renters be available to this funding source as well?
Not in the way that we're using it, probably not now, but over the years, as you know, Silver Street, which we've talked about, the Bennington House on Depot Street, all ... you know, Homestead Muse, Homestead Green, all developed by for-profit companies that took advantage of government programs that were available at that time. Okay?
And to answer your question, Mr. Carroll, no, I'm not a nonprofit, so I'm not entitled to any of this deal. It was my money, my sweat and time that went into my duplex apartment. As I explained before, it's my retirement. I'd like to again ask the board, so basically, if you figure $800 a month, but I don't know, are we going to talk about before you vote on the Shires deal, or do you want me to speak now?
Speak now. That'd be fine.
I'd like to start out with this. I'm in favor of affordable housing. I support it. I'll compete with it, do whatever I worry about competing or whatever. I cannot compete with subsidized housing. The reason is, is that, as I stated before, my duplex, I pay 1,842 dollars and 60 cents in property tax to support my community of Bennington. The information that I got from town office, which is public information, over on Roaring Branch, each unit they have is not ... they pay $993.43. Charlie Stewart want to comment on that, saying that that's what they are by law, they are assessed at for doing that?
That's correct.
Which I totally understand that. No more than we, the BCA, by law, took $900 and some thousand dollars off the grant list for the top of the money. So that's going to be ... have to be made up somewhere down the road. But anyways, to continue on, I'm requesting that the board put a moratorium on building until we do a study to find out if there is a need, which I don't see it. As a landlord, as I stated before, I have the vacancy, and it's been a long time before I see anybody even coming in applying. And it's not only me, it's other landlords that I have talked to. I have another family member that has a modular, three bedrooms, two bath, $850 a month. Nobody. The other thing I see is, is what I've stated, the amount of money that this project is paying is $993. I don't believe that's enough money to support our community. If it is, then me, everybody other homeowner here, property owner, is overtaxed. Saying that, we, the resident homeowners in Bennington, are subsidizing on our tax each and every year that these projects get developed. I feel it's an adverse effect on the community. Because we are a poor community, we receive subsidized from the state of Vermont. We are not a golden town like Manchester, et cetera, et cetera. That's my statement. Thank you very much, and hope you take that all into consideration in denying this and considering looking at more subsidized housing here in the town of Bennington. Thank you.
Jim? Okay. Anyone else have a comment for the Select Board? Okay.
Go ahead, Mike. I presented a question to you guys, where my lawyer did you all get it?
Yes, yes.
Are you going to address that thing before you take the vote, or ...
Stu, did you get word from council on that? We did not.
I am prepared.
All right, go ahead.
You want me to take it now?
Yeah, if you want to take it now.
I quote from the statute, and the question was, basically, if the board accepts grants that are outside the budget that is approved by the voters, must then the voters approve those expenditures or pass-throughs, as in the case of Vermont Community Development? The statute, Title 17, Chapter 55, Section 2664, it's entitled Budget. It was amended in 2007, where Select Board was substituted for select men in the third sentence, and the fourth and fifth sentences were added to the statute. I quote, "The Select Board may apply for grants and may accept and expend grants or gifts above those which are approved in the town budget. The Select Board shall include in its annual report a description of all grants or gifts accepted during the year and associated expenditures," which we do. That was amended in 2007. I think that answers the question.
Well, I don't think that was the total question. Could you read what my lawyer sent to you, because I don't think very confidently?
Could I object to the line of this question in discussion period? This is for citizens to raise questions. These have had the opportunity to be addressed at the last meeting. It's time to move on. The motion is going to be made today. We're not here to redo what's been talked about for the last three months.
I'm not redoing anything.
Well, you should have raised those questions earlier than ...
Well, it was a question about procedure in spending. I think what Stuart cited answers the question the way I understood in the statement made by your lawyer in the letter, the way I read it.
But Stuart isn't a lawyer, and he's reading a verse from that. I thought you people were going to be smart enough to tell you like this, that you would have at least gotten counsel's advice on this.
Where do you think I got this information, Mike?
Well, where's the reading from him? Where is it?
He doesn't have to be here to read what's in the statute. He called, we talked today. He told me to read 2664. We shared it on the phone together. He says, "Is that a clear answer to the question?" I said, "I believe it is." End of discussion.
You don't think ... let me ask you another question, Mr. Board. Is this money coming to the town, and you're going to then deliver it to Shires, and you're going to write a check, or is it coming, the check made out to Shires? You know?
The money passes through the town. We administer the grant. The grant is expended by the Shires under conditions that are established in the grant award by the Vermont Community Development Program, should this board accept the funds.
Does the money come to the town, and then you write a check for $700,000 to Shires?
No. No, it's ... they're ... I don't know the exact process, but they are billed to the Shires. The Shires gets the money and expends it. They report to us. We, in turn, report to the agency on how the funds were expended. We also report those expenditures and are audited by our auditors in our annual report and our annual audit.
And you don't put that in the budget at all?
No.
In our town budget, you don't put that?
No.
And you don't think you should be putting it?
No. It is not required.
Right.
Thanks, Mike.
I promise I will be very brief. Jean Connor. I would love to hear from each Select Board member why you're planning on voting the way you're going to vote. I don't know when you want to do that, and Greg, it's up to you if you want to follow through with that request, but I would love to hear your thoughts. You know, what was the compelling reason that caused you to vote one way or the other?
We haven't got a motion on the floor.
Right.
I think it's premature to even give that any discussion.
If there's a motion in a second, there'll be a chance for discussion, and that would be the appropriate time to do that. Okay. Is that it? All right. Thank you. Right now, we're moving to the Merchant's Park. Oh, we got someone else? Did you want to speak? I'm sorry.
My name is John Martin.
I'm sorry. Come up to the mic and say your name again, please. That's for the record. Okay.
When I was growing up, people held the belief that anything worth having in life was worth earning. They held the belief that the more the government or other people would do for you, do for you, or make sacrifices for you, the less you'll do for yourself. They had ... they held the belief that when things came too easily to people in life, they'd lose an appreciation for it, and then they'd want more and more and more. You know, it just seems to me that people single out who they're going to give public money to. And I just have a real problem with people who want to create a monopoly in the landlord My family's been in this community a long time. There's landlords in this community that still hold the belief of the things that I mentioned. You know, what about these landlords in this community that aren't asking for all these public funds? Stimulus money, grant money. You know, they got to compete, too. When I was 62 years old, I knew I wouldn't do business with one landlord in this community. At this point in time in my life, I'm convinced I won't do business with two of them. I'm a simple man with a simple life, you know? And along the way, I've had to take my finger out of my butt so my brain could get some oxygen, so my backbone would get ... be connected to my brain, you know? It just seems to me that certain people have a monopoly on grant money, stimulus money, and all this other stuff. What about the word balance? Equity? You know? I think you people ought to give some serious consideration, too, you know? I mean, that's just the way it is. I'm just a student in my own life and life's ... I'm not one of you real educated people. So I can't rationalize things that other people rationalize. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Karen, and I just have a question about the investors that are investing in the project. Who are ... do we know who they are?
Individually? You mean ...
Like, who is investing in building this project?
Well, there's a combination ...
I've read that there's investors.
As John's explaining, there's a combination of investors through tax credits and through agencies that raise the funds to do these things. I don't have a list of them, but that's, you know, there's quite a few of them.
Well, I'd be very curious to know who they are. And the tax credits, is that for one year that they don't have to pay taxes, or is it for many years?
John?
I don't know how that works. I mean, I'm sure you can get an explanation.
Well, who does know about these things and shouldn't?
That's John.
I mean, I would like to say that the reason rents are high here, and there isn't much in the way of affordable housing, it's because the taxes are too high.
May have an answer.
Every year, the taxes go up. It gets passed along in the rent, and the homeowners, of course, pay more for their property tax, and they can't afford to fix up their properties because the taxes are just eating us up. There's no jobs. Everybody's, like, moving out or trying to move out. And why should we ... okay, the problem I have, first of all, is with a rental, you're not getting tax revenue. Now, in addition to not getting tax revenue, some people that are investors, who obviously have lots of money, are going to get tax breaks. So we're going to have more housing bringing no revenue, more rich people getting tax breaks, and taxpayers already are overtaxed and can't handle any more increases.
Well, rental property does bring revenue.
It brings property tax?
Yeah. Rental property is taxed, it pays water and sewer and all that. Rental property is not tax-free. And if you're a landlord, you pay taxes on the property.
You don't pay property tax to the renters.
The renter pays rent to the landlord who pays property tax.
But if the landlord ... are the landlords the investors?
No.
Who get the tax breaks?
No, the investors here, I have a list of them. There's Vermont Community Development Program, the Low Income Housing Tax Credits, which is a 10-year FIT credit, the Vermont Affordable Housing Tax Credit, which is a five-year SIT credit, Home Investment Partnership Program, Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, and Efficiency Vermont.
A lot of those are nonprofits?
Yeah, well, they're organizations that manage different funding things, so I'm assuming that they're government agencies, not-for-profit agencies. Some of them are probably profit, but I don't know them.
Well, I was under the impression that nonprofits don't pay property tax.
No, that's not necessarily true. Some nonprofits can waive property tax, but that is not the case.
You get a discount.
Or be discounted based on their situation. But there are a lot of nonprofits that do pay property tax. You have to be exempted specifically for property tax as a nonprofit. Shires is not exempted. They work on a ... they pay taxes based on the rental value of their properties, and they're eligible on some units for up to a 10% discount on the education tax. So they do pay taxes. They pay full water and sewer rates on their units.
And another thing, why is the property selling for so much? I mean, this is not a mountaintop property with views of three states or anything. It's a small patch of land.
It's not ...
It's between the buyer and seller.
No, that ... I ... yeah, I was not ... none of us are involved in the sale of the property or the negotiated price. It would be based on the ...
And then the units, it's my understanding, they're, like, going to cost $250,000 apiece?
If you take the project and divide it by the units, that would include all of the work together.
That's, like, double the price of an average house around town.
Not to build. Buildings are pretty expensive. So ... I mean, I couldn't buy my ... I could not build my house for what it's assessed at.
And I thought this was low income for lower-income renters.
It's limited-income housing by HUD's definition, which is in the range of $25,000 to $36,000.
Oh, so two people working at one of the wonderful jobs we have in town at dollar stores or something like that, minimum-wage jobs, can't qualify to get in there?
That's right. No, that's correct.
No.
So it isn't going to be helping people in need of lower income or lower rents?
It ... well, it will be helping people in need, just not in certain ... it has a bracketed target market that's set by the investors and by the program.
This is all going over my head. I don't get the lingo and everything that you're saying, but I get the impression that the way things stand, somebody's making a lot of money here, and taxpayers are going to have more increase in taxes, because somehow I'm not buying that the rental units are going to bring the property tax that they would if they were condominiums, as they were supposed to be, and sold. And then they would be owner-occupied, and those owners would all be paying property tax.
Yes, and had they been sold and had they been built, that would be the case, but that's not what ... not the way it transpired.
Okay.
Wait a second. You know, John Broderick, this is a time when you need to step up and answer this kind of question.
No, we've had ...
No, I think this is fair. This is fair.
No, Jim, we've had four months of discussion on this. I mean, I think, and I'm going to say, we've been talking about this a lot. We've had a lot of things. There's plenty of people and plenty of ways to catch you up on what we've gone through, but, you know, you're entitled to your opinion as everyone else is. There's a lot of information to absorb on this. It's ... the funding is fairly complicated, but the question to the Select Board is, basically, if we would be willing, if the town is willing, to accept a grant on behalf of Shires and hand it over for this project, should it go forward? We're not building the project. We're not buying the property, and, you know, we don't negotiate the prices on the construction or the purchase of the property.
Now, isn't it also, I think I read in the paper, 30% of the grant money can go for other things, such as emergency repairs? Like, I was thinking, since we did not get the FEMA money for the flood project that happened, can it be used for that?
Not for the town. The grant would go to the Shires project.
The entire amount?
Yes.
But they didn't need the entire amount. They didn't need it at all to go ahead with the project, so why can't 30% go to the town for other things that we need?
Because we don't write the grant.
It's not what the grant's intended for. The grant is intended for housing.
All right. There's other people that want to speak. I'm going to ask, if you need more information, we'd be happy to get it to you. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Ed Luciano. I don't know if you understood exactly every question that's been asked here, but I just looked at the bill for a couple of these properties, and they're paying about half of what a homeowner would pay for the same property. And that means, if you vote yes to accept the grant, you're also raising the taxes on everybody that owns a home in Bennington.
Okay.
My name's Dennis Hurd, and my issue is losing tax revenue. If it goes to home ownership, it's $150,000 a year. Mr. Broderick said he's going to pay $24,000. You could sit on that piece of property for five years, and if somebody come in and put a project in, it makes up the five years. And you get $175,000 a year in tax revenue or more the rest of eternity. The other thing is, I don't know where he gets his information and how many kids go to school. He did a survey on 12. That's false. He did a survey on 16 cars. There's already 16 cars living there. So it's going to be 80 cars or 70 cars involved. I think that's a PBR or BBR project. So the school system and taxes are my main concern.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on. The next item is a Merchant's Park and 336 Main Street Design Strategy. John Shanahan from the Better Bennington Corporation is going to speak on that.
Good evening. Stu passed out a copy of what I'm going to be discussing tonight.
Just speak up a little, John. That's not amplified. That's just ...
Yeah, okay. Basically, I'm here just to talk about a project that the Design Committee of the Better Bennington is working on, and ... Better Bennington is working on. And we have two projects, Merchants Park, which has been turned over to town property, and 336 Main, which has been purchased and also turned over to the town. We're going about both projects separately, but backing it up a bit, a big story is the park system downtown. We don't have a town green, so we've been looking at downtown as a string of parks, including Riverwalk Fountain Park, which is next to the courthouse downtown in the Better Bennington Corporation. And now we're looking at these two parks as well. The 336 Main Park, which was purchased by a resident and donated to the town, which is located in what we will be designating as the Arts District of Bennington, is a project that we've pulled together, designers, artists, architects, and we're going to draw a sketch of the park of how we'd like to see it, present it to the select board, and after we receive their approval, go ahead with funding to install paver, seating, landscaping, and artwork. The goal of that park is to make the park art itself, to enhance the district and provide some more private space and place for reflection downtown. That park itself, we've applied to be awarded some money from the Vermont Arts Council from a project that we participated in about five years ago called Art of Art, Art of Action, which there was a, an exhibit traveling the state that we hosted. And at the end, the exhibit was auctioned off and the Orton family, who funded this project, donated $60,000 back to communities for art projects. So, we applied to be awarded some money for that project there. The purpose of being here today, though, is Merchants Park. I contacted Stu, leave you go. How we'd like to do that is to hold, hold a public forum called the Design Charette, where we invite the abutting business owners and residents, and then we invite the downtown merchants and then the entire community to join us at Merchants Park in the evening to sit at the site and to give us their ideas. The strengths of the park, some of the weaknesses of the park, much of which we already know because we've used it in the past, and then their feelings of what they think would enhance our community and enhance downtown. So, I requested that we use the park that evening and then the firehouse as a rain location, but Stu asked me to come before you first just to bring us all up to date and let you know where you're at with that. Some of the steps that we've already taken on 336 is we have the Design Committee of the BBC, a member of the town office, Matthew Perry, the Director of the Vermont Arts Exchange. We've have a professional architect joining us and landscape architects also. Some of the design elements we want to use there are water in particular, and that's what we applied for money for, because Bennington has a history of water fountains. Back when Henry Putnam would complete projects, he would install water fountains. And that's with the Fountain Memorial Park, that one was restored. And we'd like all of our projects moving forward to include some kind of water feature, to include our history and one of our largest natural resources. On the Merchants Park project, which is on page two, same thing. We've already catalogued the assets of the property, being its location, some of its existing structure there already, and took some elements that are already there, keeping in mind that when the town took possession of property, of the property, a five-year window was put on it for non-development, meaning that as we move forward, we won't look at it with hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of investment, because at some point in the next, or after five years, it may come up for development. But we want the community to be all part of it as we move forward with designing a plan for that park that we can present to you.
Okay.
That's my spiel. I just, any questions on?
Board, any questions? Tom?
On the 336 Park, are there other businesses in the area that are, have been invited to be part of that discussion on the design?
Yeah, specifically out of the Centerline Architects. We asked them to join us. We have Eric Peterson involved, which is Old Castle Theater, Jeanie Goth, or Gene Gothier from Alles Nest. We've already, actually, the person who purchased the property has knocked on every single door, spoke with every single individual. We've actually had to use Katie Cleavers as access to the park as we've already started cleaning it up and assessing some of its strengths already.
Good, thanks.
Yeah, very excited about it, especially with, you know, the Art Guild just moved over onto that section. A new jeweler moved in that is exhibiting, exhibiting a lot of artwork. The Fiddlehead Gallery is there, Katie Cleaver, Catbird Studio, the theater, it, it, it already possesses a lot of artistic businesses there as it is. So, they're excited that, number one, we're going to move forward with the designation, and number two, a park that will feature artwork.
What's the timeline, John?
Don't have a timeline set yet, because the next stage after we get your approval as we're moving forward is to bring people in and do a sketch-up of design concepts and then, of course, fundraising to pay for this. And our, our hope as we move forward is to work, as we did with the Fountain Memorial Park, where if we apply for arts grants, it usually requires matching funds, a lot of which can be in-kind. And as we did that at Fountain Park, the town crew, the equipment and skill they had as far as the landscaping, sidewalk, shrubs and all of that, works as matching funds toward anything that we look to receive.
I'm good.
Karen?
No, no questions.
I just want to point out that both of these parks were donated to the town.
Yeah.
So, and this is, the parks issue was brought up in the VCRD discussions as a, as a highlight in a lot of the discussions of things lacking downtown.
Yeah.
Thank the folks that donated these. Jim, do you have any? Justin, do you have any?
I don't.
John?
Nope.
So, do we have a consensus for John to move forward and work on the community input and charette, as they call it?
Consent.
We have a consensus.
All right. And on that note, I would like to invite all of you to join us and the public at home and everybody in Bennington to be there with us. I'm choking on the date.
September 30th?
September 30th at 5:30, which I think is a Tuesday night. So, hopefully you can all be there. If it is raining, we'll hold it inside the fire station.
So, it would be at Merchants Park?
At the park. Yep, just bring a chair. Thanks.
Thanks, John. All right. The next item is the VCDP Grant Award. This is the grant that Shire's was awarded. I would need a motion from the board to accept the award and, and forward it to the Shire's based on their meeting the requirements.
So, moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any discussion?
Who's that?
Michael.
I did.
John, would you like?
I actually had a few questions last week and it's my understanding that we're going to be able to ask Shire's Housing questions as well this week. Is that not the case anymore? That was the reason why I was asking at the end of the meeting last week if we could address any concerns as a board before bringing this up tonight.
So, you have questions for Shire's?
A lot of it's related to what, what was talked about last week and the notes that I took from, from people talking. Some of the questions are some, are from myself as well, but I was hoping to at least be able to address those. Maybe last week was appropriate, but I thought that maybe at the end of our meeting last week, that's when we would have had an opportunity.
Well, I can invite Mr. Broderick if he has, if he would like to address any, or questions from the board. Would you like to come forward? Okay.
First question was actually, was actually for Stu.
Okay.
There was a question on the, the sewer system up there and it's, it's in good shape. My question, the follow-up question, I guess, would be, when are we scheduled to address that in the future?
Actually, it's not on any of our plans to be addressed. South Street was, was entirely redone, got practically a decade ago, torn right down. Drainage, water and sewer systems were all replaced with state and federal tax dollars as well as local funds. So, I don't see that there'll be a need to do any work associated with this project or, and the other project that might occur at that site and in that area.
Typically, it has a lifespan of 50 years?
50 years or more. Many of our, our infrastructure has far exceeded that.
Okay. I guess, moving on to your questions, kind of goes with some of the comments that were made earlier tonight as well. What, what typically indicates a need for affordable housing, more affordable housing? I know you've gone over this before, but some things have been set at one side, some things have been set on another side. I just wanted to ask the question directly.
And, and I misspoke, actually, if I'm, two people, I would say, one person on in minimum wage, but two people together making minimum wage would qualify for an affordable housing at approximately $35,000.
You know, it's an inexact science, I'm sorry to say. That's why we gave a range of between 25,000 and 36,000, because there's different funding layers, there's different ways of calculating. It's just, you know, it's a, it's a tough and complicated business that we're in. There's many overlapping funding streams. Sometimes it's different rents for the same sized apartment in the same building. So, that, that is how it goes.
Well, no, I guess my question wasn't specific to the, the price range. It was, what indicates a need for more affordable units?
John, it's when people are saying to us that they can't find a place to rent. That's the biggest thing. And I know that there are, there are property owners that are, that are here that, that have vacancies. But if you look at what's advertised and compare that with the number of renters that are out there, and if, I guess, if you're in the business that we're in and people are constantly coming in looking for apartments that they can afford and looking for apartments that are not in a neighborhood that they determine to be really bad, I think anecdotally, we're, we're in a good position to determine whether there is a shortage of, of quality apartments out there. So, in part, it's based on what we hear from people that, that we talk to all of the time. In addition, we're required to do a market study, which you've seen, which is done by an outside professional who does market studies, who determined that there's a very low vacancy rate for this kind of rental in this income range.
Okay. How many more projects do you anticipate us needing as a town moving forward? I know you can't predict the future a year from now, two years from now, but in our, our position today, how many more units would you see the town of Bennington needing on top of this?
I think we will be back before you in the coming years to do more rehabilitation projects of the existing housing stock. Do I see a 24-unit new construction project on the horizon? Not for some time. I think it's safe to say.
Okay. And looking at this project and the budget, I think there was project management fees of about 1.4 million. Was that an accurate number? I, I don't know where the paper came from. I thought it was from someone that spoke and I just wanted to.
What I will say is to compare a low-income housing tax credit development with a private sector development is really apples and oranges. And it's a long and complicated explanation about what goes into, you know, project management. They're expensive. They're expensive to build because we have so many requirements, prevailing wage rates, you know, but we buy the materials. We buy the materials from, from companies that are out there in, in the private market. So, yes, I think 230,000 is wildly expensive to pay for a development like this. But what the town gets is permanently affordable housing, permanently affordable. It's not going to go into foreclosure, it's not going to fall apart, it's not going to have drug dealers there for a long, long, long time to come. Perpetuity is a long time and that's what we sign up for when we take these grants.
I guess what I was looking for was the project management portion of it, not necessarily the construction, construction funds, but what, what does your team require? That's what I, when I hear project management, I hear, you know, the salaries of the staff and the, the outside market studies.
Project management, I'd have to go back into the exact budget line and really dig into that to find out what exactly it is. But we have project managers that are assigned to make sure that construction goes right and make sure that, you know, I mean, I, I can't give a thorough explanation without looking onto the budget and finding out what that line is and, and going through. It sounds high, but it's because we have incredible numbers of regulatory hurdles that we need to get through.
Right, no, understandable. Again, the tax, tax question came up a number of times. What was your anticipated tax, annual tax dollar amount for one duplex?
For the development, it's around 25,000. And I know that's low. It sounds low, but we paid 109,000 in taxes last year. And if we were, if we did not have state law, Act 68, that reduced our taxes by 5.61%, then we would have paid 115,000.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I was looking for the single duplex number because I, a lot of homeowners out here or property owners that might own a duplex, they're not going to own six and, and also a six unit. They're going to own one.
So, approximately 25,000 and 24 units, that's a little bit more than 1,000 a unit.
1,000 a unit, so 2,000 for the, it's roughly two-thirds, a little less than two-thirds of what someone might.
Right, and again, I'll direct you to John Antonioni, who was here to answer your questions several months ago. And I'll, you know, I'll defer to him on that question because that's how it ends up, you know, that's how it gets determined.
Yeah, his, his explanation gave it in terms of percentages and how the system worked was, is very valuable. I just wanted to break it down to dollars so I could translate it into, you know, what I pay for a duplex compared to what the project would pay. Wanted to look at, let's see. You said that we were looking at holding these rental properties as long as we possibly can, but on the same, same side of things, you mentioned that you're not in this as a rental business. You're trying to promote home ownership, correct?
Community housing organizations do a lot of different things. Shire's housing does a lot of different things. I think it's really important that we, we spend more time in the future, you know, helping the, the one and two-family home market that's out there to make sure that we move owner occupants back into the duplexes, which have swung wildly toward both sides being renter occupied. And I think that's what a lot of people's frustration is really about. I think that when neighborhoods deteriorate because there's too many renters where there used to be homeowners, that's a problem. And our job is to work on improving housing conditions. Building 24 units of new rental stock helps the town by adding to the rental stock, by lowering the average age of the rentals, by having some quality, you know, very, very high-quality options out there for people who are in a very, very targeted income range. Does that mean we're not going to pay attention to the, to the, to the single families and the duplexes out there? No, we need to be paying more attention to those.
Right. I guess similar to the, the survey that you took, I've asked a number of landlords as well. Again, mostly people that are, you know, young professionals or people trying to just kind of step into that home ownership position and buy their first duplex or whatever it might be. And similar to the reactions of other people out in the crowd, they've had, they've struggled to find good tenants as well. So, right now we have a number of landlords saying we can't find good tenants and it sounds like you have a number of tenants saying they can't find places to live, which is kind of, well, they counter each other. So, a little confusing on that end.
I'm confused by it too, John, just to be honest.
Okay. I know, I know last year I went through a bit of a struggle myself. I'm, I'm one of those owner-occupied duplexes and I actually had to go through a process of getting rid of some tenants because of some trouble, which doesn't need to be detailed at all. But after that, it took me two mon, two months to find anybody that was appropriate, going through the background checks and all of that stuff. So, very difficult for myself, two months of, of having a vacancy and it's just one property. So, I know there's other people out there that feel the same way and have gone through five months, six months, seven months. Sometimes they just give up. So, in either case, I know it's, it's, they kept those two ideas.
John, it's a really difficult business and I don't take away anything from the people who have poured their, their time and their money and effort into duplexes over the years. It's a very, very tough business. It's tough to make it work.
Right. So, kind of circling back to a couple of the comments that were made, did you, did you say that you were looking into programs where you could have developed home ownership within the rehabilitation process? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. And I know you're pushing that and you're a strong advocate of it. Have any of the, the tenants moved on to purchase homes from your, your properties? I know it's considered, I've heard stepping stone, this is a good spot for people to start when they're not making enough money to potentially buy a home. And it's meant to be that transitional period. Have they been able to transition or is this, is this a place that serves to be a home for 10 years for, for most people?
There are people who stay with us for a long time. There are some people that move to us when they're elderly and they stay with us. And, and there are people that move on to home ownership. I've been here since 2009. Every year, there's at least one or two that move on and, and buy a house.
Are there plans to try and take these properties, the duplexes and? Are there plans to try and take these properties, the duplexes and some of the other properties that you've, um, you've built up, and try to sell them back to people so they can really gain this ownership position? I mean, that seems like a, a positive way to use this funding to help people.
You know, the, the, we have a hundred and forty-nine units currently in Bennington, and just from the town plan and the percentage of, of rental units, it said that there's more than twenty-four hundred rental units, so, we have really a fraction, so, it would be too complicated from a business standpoint to actually take the units that we have and get rid of all the covenants on them and convert them back over to, to owner occupancy, but again, I think I've pledged here before you in an other public forum that, that we will not take any more one- or two-family homes that are historic, that are out there already, and take them into our rental portfolio, but instead, we will work to make sure that those become owner occupied, and that owners get an opportunity to, to launch their lives from that.
With that, I know another comment that typically circles around is that, uh, you're developing good properties that promote living, good living conditions as well, and there's a lot of landlords out there that do not do this. Have you, uh, reached out to these alleged bad landlords to try and help them and use your, your funding to increase the property values of their rentals?
I'm sorry, could you rephrase the second part of that?
Sure, so, so there's been comments that there's bad landlords out there that don't provide adequate living spaces for different people, but this project helps promote, um, a living environment that they do not, uh, give to their people or their tenants. So, do you have the ability to help redevelop their, uh, their homes as well?
I'm not saying there are bad landlords or good landlords out there, there are a lot of people that own property, and, um, sometimes they get into it for one reason and end up over their head and end up, you know, not doing as good a job as they originally intended. There are some people out there that are just out to grow a big portfolio. I am happy to talk to anyone who wants to, you know, to talk about that, and I don't think I've been hiding from property owners, I think I, I speak to the major rental property owners in town more or less frequently, and through this process, I've met lots and lots of people that own one duplex. So, um, I don't want to be presumptuous and really offer advice, especially while this debate is going on, that's a little bit presumptuous on my part, but I'm open to talking to people about ways that they can make their rental units more viable, because I think that's something that helps strengthen the town and is part of our mission.
Uh, and I think this is probably the last question, but one of the big sticking points for me, I know someone had asked what your decision was going to weigh on, is, it is that dollar amount, I mean, I know, I know it's a major project, um, but it's hard to get around, um, the fact that each unit is between two-thirty and two-eighty. Again, both numbers were used, which way does it fall per unit?
Probably two-hundred-and-thirty construction and two-eighty, like, all-in with soft costs and-
After everything's said and done, so the two-eighty, so again, I'm trying to break this down for my, my own personal lifestyle and, um, a lot of my friends, um, so if I'm looking at it from the single duplex standpoint, we're looking at the, what, five-sixty for a duplex, whereas, and again, it was made, the comment was made today, um, to buy a duplex in the town of Bennington, right now, it's one-forty to one-fifty, so, can you speak to that and, and the justification behind it, instead of, instead of working with those landlords and say, putting, putting in thirty thousand dollars to, to renovate?
Once again, comparing a low-income housing tax credit development with all of its regulatory requirements and all of its overlapping funding streams, um, these developments work out there, and our development is very much in line with what is, um, what Vermont Housing Finance Agency sees from other organizations of our type that apply for these funds, and what other organizations around the country do. To compare that with a, a pure private sector development that doesn't have all those hoops to jump through is really apples, apples to oranges. And I think that, um, there are lots of hurdles, including, including having to po, having to pay higher wage rates because we're, we're, we have to pay prevailing wage, we have to go through lots and lots and lots of inspections, and again, we're building something, when we get the keys to it, we don't get any more subsidy. So, a, a lot of, a lot has been said about subsidized housing. Subsidized housing, for me, is when the ongoing rent is subsidized month after month after month, such as Silver Street, Homestead Mews, Homestead Green, and Bennington House on, on Depot Street. They are subsidized every month, ours is not. You know, we get plenty of government resources to build, but once we get the keys, we're on our own.
Right, but if you were to remove my mortgage, then I could also reduce the rent for each unit by three hundred dollars, so, in that sense, I'll happily take the money upfront and then call it non-subsidized housing.
Right.
And, uh, similar to the efficiency upgrades, I mean, my heat's very expensive, like I'm sure everybody else's is, um, and through a survey with Efficiency Vermont, even a small fifteen thousand dollar portion would help reduce my, my heating expense between two-hundred-and-fifty and three-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month, so, so that would allow me to reduce rent, again, by a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So there's, you can call it non-subsidized, but there's a lot of expenses that, that, um, the homeowners out there have to pay that isn't really built into the project as it continues forward.
Not saying life is easy out there for, for, you know, homeowners, or for people who invested in a duplex and, and took a risk with that, with that gamble, but, um, John, bottom line, I think that there's, you know, a lot of people out there who are looking for housing, um, and they're not finding it, and that's why we see a demand, and that's why we're hoping to move forward.
Um, last thing, I swear this time, uh, you made the comment that, um, this, this project's working and this is, this is working all over the country, um, with the thousand-plus signatures that we've had, do you still consider that working within this town? I mean, in a town where thirteen hundred people come out to vote, um, and we have over a thousand signatures, uh, trying to contest this, do you consider this working? And on top of that, what continues to push you forward when there's such, uh, resistance from the town of Bennington?
John, I'll, I'll repeat what I've said before about this, people are upset about a lot of things in this town, people are upset about heroin addiction, they're upset about young women with baby strollers on, you know, up and down Main Street, they're upset about Placin moving, Greenberg's closing, Naps Pet Store closing, vacant storefronts, there's a lot of anger out there, I get that, I understand it. I think it's misdirected to hang all that anger on this housing development. I think it's misdirected respectfully, there's a lot of anger out there.
Folks, folks. So, it's, I agree, you know, I'm, I'm one of the people that are, is very upset about those, those things that you just listed, um, but, that being said, they weren't upset to the point where they went out and got a petition going for any reason whatsoever, whether it be to get, push the select board to getting funding, federal or state, to push certain projects one way or another. They weren't upset enough to get those, those petitions signed, in this case, they were, and I don't think that they were getting angrier and angrier, waiting to burst on one particular project, I think that, that's unfair to say, but I appreciate your, your answers.
Um, excuse me, I, I couldn't hear before what you said were the tax amounts on the, on the, there are, there are probably still-
So for a duplex, it'd be roughly two thousand dollars, and that's-
The whole, for both sides combined?
For the duplex as it stands.
Why is my radical house that's less than a hundred and thirty thousand?
We're not, we're not discuss, we're not discussing that right now, I'm sorry.
That's, that's something to consider, which is why I wanted to look at the number.
Does anybody else have a question for John?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Compare this initiative that you're doing to, uh, what's happening in the rest of Vermont, the other counties where your peers are working.
Our peers are building larger developments because they, they, they're, they're more populous, uh, but our developments are being used to help fund economic renewal.
Rentals, new properties, rehabs, what are they doing?
Um, there, there's a good mix out there, uh, there, there are, every time the Vermont Housing Conservation Board has a block of tax credits, there's a serious competition, Burlington, Brattleboro, Barry, uh, Pelear, Northeast Kingdom, Rutland are usually in there with, with the development. Sometimes it's new construction, sometimes it's rehab. In the case of Rutland, the Rutland Housing Authority is taking down an old development and, and building something else, um, so it's all over the place, but what's common to them is that they're helping to drive the economy. If you take five million dollars and pump it into a, a small economy, it helps. And you know, once again, I'll say, business community has not come out vocally in support of this, but a, a, a good percentage of our last project, the funding went to local contractors, local subcontractors.
One, one more.
All right, go ahead.
All right, I'll get back to you. Remind me of the median household, household income in the town of Bennington and the per capita income in the town of Bennington. How do you link that to your, this current project?
County is-
Not county, town, town of Bennington.
Well, it's, it's thirty-four?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight thousand, I'm sorry, I go by county, because that's what we're governed on, sixty-two thousand for the county, thirty-eight thousand for the town, which means there's a, a large percentage of people in Bennington that are qualified for.
Yeah. I would, if this goes through, I would echo one of John's comments, which is, I, I also found the program management component of this a bit rich. You might want to watch that if this goes through, seriously.
Jim, you had a question for John?
Yeah. Um, John, where is the seven hundred thousand going to be spent?
Hard costs, uh, so primarily construction, some small amount for, for project management.
Okay. Um, you and I have spoken several times about this, and you've mentioned it, you've mentioned this in several meetings that you're gonna, and you spoke about it briefly tonight, that you're gonna foster, um, your current, uh, tenants to become owner, owners of duplexes or, or, uh, uh, property owners with respect to the people that you rent to. What's the timeframe on this? And I think it really goes to the heart of one of the central things that I've heard that I'm, that I'm concerned about too, and that is, Ms. McKenna, as a matter of fact, is one that brought this up a while ago, and, uh, uh, taking people from dependence to independence, well, with respect to being property owners and, uh, uh, property taxpayers, what groundwork have you laid and how serious are you about it? And when are you gonna start?
There are five homeownership centers in Vermont, designated homeownership centers that have a national affiliation with the National Neighbor Works Organization, we're not one of those, but we're, we've been talking to the one that we're covered by, which is in West Rutland, about doing more here, and we've been engaged in those conversations for some time. I have a proposal out to a private foundation where we're hoping to be able to raise the money to hire a person just to focus on issues of, of homeownership, single families, and duplexes, and I hope to be able to announce something by the end of this year.
Okay, I, I hope that, that is true, John, and, uh, I hope it doesn't just come out as, as just-
Can you hear me, sir?
I hope that does become true and it's just not talk. Mike?
Yeah, um, if these funds weren't to go through, how would that affect this project? Clearly, you have other investors, um, I just would like to know the impact, would the project cease to exist, um, or would it continue forward? Do you have other means of, of gaining funds other than this route?
Would certainly slow it down, but it probably wouldn't stop it entirely.
Could you cut out a duplex? I mean, what, what are your options?
That's, that would not be something that's possible, because it would throw off the whole, the whole thing, we'd have to go back to our funders, but I haven't given it a, a lot of thought, because I'm optimistic that it's gonna fly.
Anyone else have anything for John?
No.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right. No, we're, we're, we're in emotion right now, so, thank you.
You accept the question.
No, we've asked, we've asked him questions.
Yeah, the board had a question for, for Shire's Housing, who's the party involved.
I was thinking how a mayor did if he was wrong, and here was the three minutes, I would love if we lost the question.
This, this is not the time. Um, do we, do we have anyone else, um, any other discussion?
I, I think this is the time for us to-
Yeah.
To let them know-
You're free to do that.
How we fall one way or the other.
I'd be happy to weigh in with my opinion on this project.
Mr. Jacobs?
I appreciate, uh, the concerns that have been put forward over the last three and a half to four months. Uh, my decision doesn't come easy, um, because there has been a significant personal, uh, issues raised by, and the folks that have come before us. Um, I've been impressed by the number of signatures on the petitions that have been presented, you know, when you see this number of petitions, uh, that causes you to get, get your attention, or causes my attention, anyway. But frankly, I'm surprised there weren't even more signatures on the petition, because if I had seen that petition, uh, suggesting that our taxes were going to go up and property values were going to go down, frankly, I could have signed that petition as well. This is not a project that is going to cause our taxes to go up and our properties to go that, down in value. And I appreciate the, the courtesy of listening, if you don't listen, you're not going to be able to get the, at least the sense of our position. You know, Bennington's a wonderful place, but we are frankly bleeding jobs, our economy is stagnant, and if you think that we can just continue to go on as we have in the past, and just assume that folks will come in and rent the properties that are on the rolls right now, then you're sorely mistaken. I don't see ten, twenty, or a hundred jobs coming into this community. In fact, unless we can show and demonstrate quality, affordable housing, you can suggest that this property, this town is going to continue to stagnate. When you have got a project that is offering to pump in five million dollars, we- I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, would you caution the people out there?
We're, we're speaking now, we've been listening for four months, it's our turn, we'll continue. Thank you, Tom.
I don't see five million dollars coming into this town. It's time for this town to realize that there is investment, and it's not going to be private, if there were, we should be standing at the trough. But frankly, the, I think as John suggested, there are federal and state tax dollars that are being used to finance this five-million-dollar project. I can only react by observing other communities in the state and around the country, like Barry, Brattleboro, St. Albans, just to name a couple, that have taken advantage of tax dollars, tax credits, and have revitalized and rehabilitated their towns. I think that time is overdue for us to also get the benefit of that activity. We need an economic shot in the arm. It's our, our town is at a crossroads in many ways. If we don't have an infusion of significant amounts of capital, then our town is going to suffer, and that's not something that I want for myself, or my children or grandchildren. So I support the Towns Administration of the grant.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, thank you, Tom. Uh, I'm going to agree with a number of things that Tom said, but I think I bring a different perspective to this and different experience to the board. Because of that, you probably need to know what's influencing my vote. More than anything else, what influences my vote is 702 54th Street in Brooklyn, New York. Now, unlike many of you, I'm the son of immigrants, right off the boat. Seven oh two 54th Street's a walk-up apartment house in an old Brooklyn neighborhood. My family and many other immigrants live there at reasonable rents. Now, many years ago, when we lived there, there were tenants from fifteen different countries in Europe and the Middle East, and long after we moved, the tenants came from El Salvador and Guatemala. Today, the tenants there are part of the newest, biggest Chinatown in the United States, and the neighborhood always bustles with activity. What we had in common was we were all entry-level Americans, entry-level Americans, and give me a second with that, so that you're gonna understand what I'm getting to. We got our start at seven oh two, some of the neighbors, some of the neighbors spoke languages I didn't understand. We, their kids, played together, we went to school with, with each other, and we dated one another. Those entry-level Americans all became friends, they faced the same challenges, they had a place to call home that they could afford. Now, here's the link. We've all experienced a very harsh economy in this country in the past twelve years. That harsh economy has created so many entry-level Americans, whether they're immigrants or not, with low wages and decreasing buying power in every age group. So for me, there's an economic parallel between us immigrant families at seven oh two and today's entry-level Americans, whether they're immigrants or not. If those people are going to survive, and if we want them to thrive as part of the Bennington community, then they need affordable- community, then they need affordable, safe places to live. So I'm voting on behalf of these entry-level Americans, whether they're from El Salvador, Ireland, China, or Woodford, Townall, or Bennington. Thank you.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I wasn't as, as prepared. Um, I was just looking strictly at the facts. Um, the bottom line is that I don't think the money makes sense in, with this project. The, uh, the split per, per unit, per duplex just adds up significantly, and I understand that for, for all of the overhead that Shire sees, that might not make sense. Um, but maybe these types of grants don't make sense if, um, if instead we could put this towards the private sector in some way. By dedicating a third of what's being dedicated to each duplex, I think any duplex in town could reduce their rents by a thousand dollars across the board. So that would significantly, um, put them in even more affordable housing. But I guess that's, that's going to be lost. Um, on top of that, looking at the thousand signatures, I, I don't see the signatures as being signed in ignorance. I think they, there's been things said on both sides. Um, that happens with any, any debate, especially one that goes for as long as this one has. Um, but I, I don't see them as, as, as signatures signed without all of the information and listening to the, to the project. So I, I have that way, that weighs heavily into my decision as well. Um, and I think it should for everybody, um, here on the board, especially considering that thirteen hundred people vote, uh, at a, at a good election. I mean, the water bond projects has run up, been brought up a couple of times, and I think we had less than six hundred, around six hundred voters, uh, total for a three-point three million dollar project. So the interest is here, and I think we have to listen to people. Um, I, I know we argued the need for the, for affordable housing and we have tenants that say they can't find housing, and every landlord I talked to talks about the struggle that they have trying to find good tenants that they can, they can put into their, their homes. So I think there's a bigger issue at hand. Um, but, but the fact is that I know I struggled, I know friends that have struggled, I know other landlords that have struggled, and I, I don't see the need for the additional housing, uh, at this moment. We've, we've pushed forward a number of market surveys. I know there was one done for this project in particular, but I believe it was done years ago, uh, and when, when I addressed that, that study with the person that made, or had done the study, performed the study, uh, they were unwilling to give me any information on it. Um, on top of that, I know the comment has been made that this is a five million dollar boost into our economy. When looking at what's actually coming in, the majority, uh, of the funds that went towards Bennington, uh, Bennington owners or, or electricians, plumbers, contractors, whatever it happens to be, the majority of the money that went towards Bennington was for electrical work and plumbing work. Now surely that's not five million dollars. I think it would be south of even half a million dollars. I'd, I'd venture around a quarter million dollars. So I understand the stimulus, but it's definitely not in the range of five million dollars. Just like all of the, the guidelines that Shire's has to go through, they also have to adhere to a quoting process, where they quote out to a certain number of people across, across the state and possibly outside of the state, and they're going to be forced to take the, this project and take the contractors, electricians, plumbers, with the lowest bid. They, yes, they would love to use the people in Bennington, and I, I admire that, but they are handcuffed in a sense. So to think that five million dollars is coming to people of Bennington and in Bennington, that's, that's wrong. You can look at previous projects to see that that's just not true. So with that and excluding a number of other concerns that have been addressed, the traffic, the, the potential educational burden, um, I'll, I'll not mention those even though I just did, and say that my position is to, uh, be against this project.
Okay. Thank you, John. Justin?
You know, I, I think that Shire's Housing has done a lot of good work in this community. There's been a lot of projects that they've done that have benefited this community. This isn't gonna be one of them. This is the wrong project in the wrong location. It's not an economic shot in the arm for this town. It's gonna be a detriment to a neighborhood. Um, there's things that they can do that I would stand behind as a leader of this community, and this just simply is not one of them. Two-hundred-and-thirty to two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars to build a two-unit apartment is an egregious waste of taxpayer funds no matter how you cut it. I, I just can't see it any other way. Um, you know, and I've never seen this community come out for or against anything. In the four years I've been on this board or the thirty-one years I've lived, um, and to see this community come out and attend to these meetings every night and have a thousand person petition and deliver it to this board, and the idea that we wouldn't take that serious enough to stand behind the people that elected us to be here blows my mind. I, I can't support this and I won't.
Jim?
This is, uh, this been, this, uh, decision has been a source of, uh, a lot of sleepless nights and early dawns, and it has not been easy for me. I said several months ago that I knew that there was gonna be a day when I would have to go up against my ni- I, I said several months ago that there was gonna come a time when I would have to, uh, make a decision that would go against my friends, the Amadons, the Kennedys, the Callanans, other people that I've known all my life. But I also, when I ran for the select board, did my homework and looked at the town plan and became, was appointed to, uh, become part of a study on economic development for the town of Bennington. And this project, despite its, and I think it is in spite of its location, fits all of the desires and the things that we want for this town, both short and long term. And while I, it is with reluctance that I will vote for this, but it's not a happy place for me to be. I have always wanted to do, and whenever I have voted for anything with respect to anything that's come before me for the, for the town of Bennington, central to my mind has always been, what is in the best interests for all of the people of Bennington? And I know that this is in conflict with some of the people of Bennington and people that I've known all my life, but in my heart, I believe it's the right thing to do. That's it.
Thanks, Jim. Sharon?
Thank you. Um, I have to agree with everything that Tom has said, um, but I think I need to take it one step further, and the town of Bennington has a document that's called the Bennington Strategic Economic Development Plan. Um, and in that executive summary, and the board, this board adopted this plan, um, in two thousand and thirteen. And one of the ten main objectives in that document is to develop an adequate supply of quality housing units at affordability level consistent with the workforce housing. And I think that's, this is what this project is. And I live in the same neighborhood. They're gonna be a neighbor for me, just like they're gonna be a neighbor for a lot of you, um, and they already are a neighbor across the street on South Street. But they've consistently done and provided affordable housing for a lot of people in this community, and I have to support it.
Thank you, Sharon. That leaves me. Um, I prepared a, a short statement that will fit within three minutes out of respect for the people who did that on our behalf last week. Um, when this grant was first proposed, I voted in favor of it because I knew of Shire's Housing's record of building safe and high-quality apartments, um, and it was necessary for an underserved segment of our population. And I know Shire has a long history of community-wide support. Specifically, the development was addressing an abandoned project that had left a key neighborhood with a scarred landscape and a potential for a lot less desirable outcomes. Since then, a lot of voices have insisted we take a closer look, and perhaps there was more to this development than I had originally extracted, so I continued to listen and read. What came was a mix of ill-willed conjecture and thoughtful debate. I heard of a lot of opposition and a lot of support for a lot of reasons, and much of the opposition contradicted other opposition. Remember, we, we hear this stuff outside these meetings, so we're not always talking about the things people say at the microphone. We hear a lot of things on the street. The common thread through the opposition was generally fear, fear of what would happen in the neighborhood. And while it takes many shape, fear, many shapes, fear is real. Even if the threat may be imagined or exaggerated, a neighborhood is a valuable thing and changes are not taken lightly. Go back to what Mr. Carmody said about keeping our eye on the ball. This is, my concern is, is this project and how it's gonna affect the town. Um, I'll admit that there's a risk. In any effort that offers, that offers gains, there is a risk, and our job is to assess the risk and to balance the goals with the exposure. In this case, I felt that the risk of leaving the land to chance outweighed the risk of development by a known and respected organization. The development was pro, proposed for twenty-eight additional condominium townhouse units. In the heart of the real estate bubble, those lots did not sell. Currently condominiums are still for sale. The original plan was not created to house Bennington residents, puts a tracked market from Albany and beyond. Adding twenty-eight more units in the same price range as the existing condominiums and the homes on Silver Street would saturate that area with more supply than I think we could see demand for, for years. That can hardly help those market prices in that neighborhood. What Shire's Housing does is create safe and affordable housing for an economic demographic that falls between the cracks. We can't expect commercial landlords to pursue markets that are not profitable. It's unrealistic. We cannot, however, continue to lose the young employees that we need to build our town. We have local kids living at home until they're thirty. We have twenty-somethings that are coming to town and moving on in a year because they don't see a future. If they don't come here married, they rarely stay. Think about what affordable housing can do for that scenario. It creates a situation where the working single or working family can save money for a down payment. It puts the homes on Silver Street and Eden Way in sight of potential buyers. I personally have purchased a house in the same neighborhood where I've rented twice. I want to thank the citizens of engaging productive conversation on this. This is a conversation among neighbors. Open and civil dialogue is what makes a neighborhood endure. I came here twenty-three years ago to work second shift in a printing plant. I didn't make a lot of money, but I had help. I had a second income with me. I had a family to help with the down payment. Without that help, I don't know where I'd be. People always ask what we're doing for the working people and the retired people who are just hanging on, and this is an opportunity to help just those people. Now, I understand that if you don't like government subsidies, you're not gonna like this project. I think this is a, an example of where government subsidies can help a population that is falling between the cracks and allow, allow private landlords to do what they do. Um, that's not to say that's an easy task and that we shouldn't be helping them out as well, but I will support the, the transfer of the grant. And, um, should, should the, uh, project move forward, the grant also puts conditions on to make sure that this project is completed, built properly, and maintained, which would not happen if you did not have the grant in place. Anyone else?
I just want to point out that, that, that study that Sharon has in her hand was based on economic, uh, growth in our town and the expected, um, development of new jobs coming in, and to Tom's point, right now, if you look at this last year, we probably don't see ten, ten new jobs, twenty new jobs, or a hundred new jobs coming in quickly.
I heard two this last month.
Okay. That's not ten, a hundred?
Twenty percent of ten.
Okay. We can talk semantics, but the truth is that it was based on growth, not the loss of two-hundred-and-fifty jobs last year.
Right.
So let's, let's keep that in mind when we refer back to market studies.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other discussion? We have a motion.
Call about?
All in favor? That is five. Those opposed are two. So the motion passes five to two. Okay. We'll take a short recess. Take five minutes and let, looks like folks want a clear.
I'm living toilets, huh?
Yeah, I almost couldn't read it.
Well, two thousand and eleven, apparently.
Yeah. All right. You ready, Chris? All right, we're back. We're gonna short recess. Our next item on the agenda is, uh, we're revisiting the policy on agency funding. We had a request from the town clerk last week to, uh, look at this to try and alleviate some of the, uh, staff time that they, it takes them to, uh, verify signatures when an agency has been successful in, uh, getting funding on the ballot and is not asking for more money. Any, any discussion from the board on this? Their, their studio, have any comments to start with?
Well, I think that the issue that the town clerk is raising is the one, the, the one sentence that is underlined in the first paragraph. And that is, basically, every third year, uh, agencies, all agencies must petition regardless of whether they're asking for an increase or not. And I think he's asking, because we are in, we are coming up on that third year, uh, it's my understanding that the town clerk would like to see that struck so that the rest of the policy can remain in place. Uh, it sets a cap at seventy-five hundred, uh, or no change in your request. Uh, those who exceed seventy-five hundred, uh, must petition. Uh, we basically have three agencies that exceed seventy-five hundred dollars in their requests. They've not had any problem petitioning each year. So I, I leave it to you. I mean, we'll carry out what you wish to do. Uh, this would have been the first year, I think, that we would have been pushing everyone to petition, and there are, what is it, eleven or twelve agencies that actually receive funding from the town?
Well, I remember, um, several discussions on this in the past, and I know there's, there's vastly differing opinions, um, between past and present board members. Um, I'll, I'll start at this time. I would make a suggestion that maybe this is an annual review by the board as to whether, um, the agencies need to do that. If we do that in, say, August, September, and let the agencies know what's, if, if we're gonna continue that and if the seventy-five hundred dollar mark stays, so, um, you know, from an inflationary standpoint, it can be harmful to an agency. You know, if they're asking for seventy-five hundred dollars for ten years, simply to, because they don't have the staff to get signatures. So it would give this, it would give the select board a chance to raise it, uh, based on, on economic factors, or if it seems to be getting out of hand, to make some kind of a, uh, a change or if the philosophy of the board changes, instead of making policies for years forward that are gonna come back to us every year anyway.
I, I think we did, I, I can appreciate this is gonna be a lot of work and to validate it.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's not easy, but it's a significant portion of our budget and ends up being about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, um, give or take, if I'm not mistaken. I, I think we changed it how, a couple of years back to try and get a gra, a grip and a grasp on, well, it started to get a little bit out of control. Those agencies that were upping their amounts every year, um, you know, and, and listen, developing a budget in March isn't easy. Uh, we find a hundred and twenty thou, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars like it's, like it's nothing, and, uh, you know, these agencies are asking for the money. Some people support, you know, they usually pass, but not everybody supports it. Um, that's, that's, that's evident. I mean, even though they do pass, they're not supported by everybody. I, I personally don't ever vote for a single one of them, and I'll tell you why. Because if I support an agency enough, a nonprofit enough, that I think it deserves money, I'm gonna take a check out of my pocket and I'm gonna send it into them, as opposed to telling other people who they've gotta donate to. And I donate to plenty of charities, but I don't wanna, I don't like doing it through the municipality. Um, I'm not in favor of changing it. I think it's, I think it's a safeguard that, that keeps it there for us and there for the, the community to make a decision of whether or not they support an agency enough to donate the money to.
Well, I, I think we put, we put the agencies on individually, and they used to be on in one lump sum. They used to be, you know, do you wanna give a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the agencies? And you didn't know who you, who they were. Now you do, so you can pick and choose. Um, but this is a policy that's been put in place that hasn't even really had a chance to run its cycle to see if it's gonna work or not. So I think we should let it run its three-year course.
I agree.
Just to see, I mean, there's no sense in making any policies if we're not gonna see them through.
Tom?
I wasn't even aware that the, you know, that the timeline was just coming up on that third year, but it just seems to me if you're a strong enough agency, you're strong enough to get petitions at a, at a given point in time to show to the, basically the populace, or, excuse me, the select board, that you're strong enough to get on the, on the ballot. It just doesn't seem to me to be a big issue. If, and I think we should leave the policy as it is.
I mean, it is a lot of work, granted, but it's, I mean-
That's part of the petition process.
And the agencies have known since two thousand and twelve that in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, that that's what they were gonna have to do. So I think they should be fully prepared to do it.
I'd just like to add just a, a few things, and that was, uh, Jason, this was Jason Morrissey's initiative, uh, two years ago, and I, and it was well reasoned, in my opinion. And it came about because of a lack of discipline with respect, and I won't name the, uh, the organization, uh, that sort of became the poster child of, uh, the development of this. But they hadn't done their homework, and it was, therefore became forced upon us to make an exception for their funding. And in all seriousness, if, if these groups or individuals or whomever-
And in all seriousness, if these groups or individuals or whomever come before us and they want funding, they need to do due diligence that anybody here in this board would have to do with respect to the homework and getting the paperwork in for funding. I wouldn't, I would not agree with changing what we have in place right now.
Michael?
I have a sort of an aside question. For, let's say, to take an example, for agencies, organizations that request more than 7,500 a year, do we have a practice of requiring either an audited financial statement or a compilation from them as they?
No.
The petitioned ones do not. It's the ones that go with the exemption that are required to provide that paperwork.
We usually get a packet of the financials.
They usually do it. They voluntarily do it in some cases.
There are some that do. Those who are placed on the ballot by the board because they have been successful in the past and because they are not exceeding $7,500, they provide us with three years of tax returns. They provide us with an audited financial statement. They provide us with an application. Those who petition because the statute provides that if they get the required number of signatures, they're on the ballot, they're not required to provide that information to us on an annual basis. Many of them do. At least two of them did last year. But they're not required to under the policy.
Is that something we'd want to think about requiring?
I don't think we can with the statute. I mean, the state statute puts them on.
Well, you can ask for it, but they're on the ballot regardless of whether they provide the information or not.
If they get the signatures, they're on the ballot, but they have volunteered to present that paperwork in the past.
Always wanted to ask my granddaughter for a financial statement.
Yeah, good luck with that. Anybody else? John?
No. I don't feel a strong...
Need to change it?
Yeah, will to change the policy. I mean, I respect what Sharon says of, you know, letting the policy run its three-year course and seeing what goes on. I mean, I understand that the staffing issues, because these signatures are all vetted. Anything that goes on, you have to make sure that it's only signed once. It's a Bennington voter. And a lot of people sign these that do not qualify, and they spend a lot of time scratching names off and reporting back to agencies. But...
But it is policy in the workplace.
There we are. So does our policy... Is there any...
We need a motion?
Well, somebody would have to make a motion to change it.
Make a motion to keep the policy as is.
No, we don't need to.
Yeah, we just need a motion if somebody wants to change it.
Motion to change it. We feel like we need to change it.
Okay, we're moving on. Apologies to the town clerk. Primary residence code exemptions.
This was the other, one of the other issues that the town clerk brought before us the last time. And some of you weren't on the board, but several years ago, there was this issue with the height of railings on decks and porches that were more than 30 inches above the ground. It's required by code that they be 42 inches, that the slats be so great a distance apart. A whole host of requirements that went with that. The issue was raised at that time with the board, and the board exempted single-family residents, homeowner-occupied residences, from that code, allowing them to go back to the 36-inch height for railings, which was normally... So I would suggest that rather than try to look through the National Building Code and the National Fire Code and the various other codes that we adopt by reference, that if the board or individuals out there have a specific exemption they're looking for, that they would present that to you and allow you to consider it for owner-occupied dwellings. The town clerk is correct. An owner-occupied dwelling being built in Shaftesbury does not need a building permit. It goes, and they can hire any contractor they want, and they build the house they want. In Bennington, we have had building codes in place since 1971. It started out as the Uniform Building Code, was amended to the National Building Code sometime in the mid to late 70s. We have adopted the codes that the state uses by reference. We now have two individuals on our staff that are both certified building inspectors. We have brought all of the permit review processes out of the state's hands for building permits, and they now rest here with our two individuals, saving developers and contractors tons of money in permit fees because we used to duplicate. We'd have a permit fee, the state would have a permit fee. Now we are the only agency that issues the building permit for all commercial and industrial and residential buildings. So, I mean, this is a decision that's been made over the years. We've become more effective in our administration. We've been more effective in our enforcement. And, but I would say to those folks out there who have an issue with the code as an owner-occupied home, bring the issue forward to us. Let us vet it. And if it seems to be unfair or unseemly, we can bring it to this board and let them act to exempt that particular section from the code rather than try to take a whole broad brush approach to eliminating codes here in Bennington.
Why are we doing this? If it's something we don't need to be doing, why are we doing it?
Well, it depends on what you mean by we don't need to do it.
Well, you said no other municipality in the state does this.
No, 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 that's not true. Shaftesbury doesn't do it. Pownell doesn't do it. Woodford doesn't do it. Arlington doesn't do it. But there are a number of municipalities. Most of the major cities have building codes. Brattleboro, Burlington, South Burlington, Rutland City, Berry, Montpelier, they all have building codes. And building codes go a long way towards protecting your housing stock from the contractor who is willing to take shortcuts, willing to use substandard materials. And as a homeowner, as someone who is building a home, you may not be fully versed in what that person is doing when they are constructing your home and when they're wiring your home. And so these codes have come down over the years through national associations making recommendations on changes and recommendations on fire protection, a whole host of things. We have very few house fires in Bennington. And I think principally because we make sure that our people are building to the standards. So do we need it? I think we do. There was a time back in the mid 70s when I was handling zoning and building codes here in Bennington where we had a ton of contractors who were not qualified to be doing the work that they were being hired to do. And it was a constant battle to try to get them and the people who had hired them to follow the codes that were in place at that time. And it went from wiring violations to inadequate fire protection in garages to... It ran the gamut because their goal was to cut costs and build the home as cheaply as possible for the homeowner. And that's not always going to get you the highest level of protection.
I've got a question for you, Stu. And while you've singled out contractors in your last part of your statement, what if I, as an individual, or John, or Greg, or anybody else here who is a private homeowner, wanted, homeowner, wanted to change their cellar door or their porch? Why should the town intrude on that decision?
I wouldn't call it intrusion. It depends on what the change is. I mean, if you have a porch that's more than 30 inches off the ground, two and a half feet, and you're going to go in and modify the structural integrity of that porch in rebuilding it, then we will step in for a building permit, not a zoning permit, but a building permit to make sure that the structural integrity remains intact. And, you know... But that's the extent of our review. It's not an intrusion. We're just making sure that you're using the right materials and building it correctly.
See, I do have a problem with that, though, because I feel, you know, if somebody's purchased their home, it's their personal home that they live in.
And it ought to be there. It ought to be up to them to decide what they want to do, as long as nobody's put at risk.
Well, that's the problem.
And that's the thing.
A home will not be owned in perpetuity. The home will not be owned in perpetuity. They're going to sell that home to somebody else. And if they took shortcuts and there are unsafe situations in that home, they're passing that uncertainty and that unsafe condition on to the next purchaser. And as you all know, the state of Vermont now requires that towns issue a certificate of occupancy when a home transfers. We have to certify that that home has no violations, that that building has no violations. Generally, it's pretty straightforward. We do it. It's cluttering up the land records. God bless the legislature for making that decision. But nonetheless, that's what we are required to do. And so the best way to do that is to make sure that it's safe from the get-go.
Michael?
This is a double economic whammy here because these building codes are put together hand in glove with property and casualty insurance companies in this country. And if you build something or live in something that is not up to code, you have an accident there or you lose something there, your insurance company may not cover that cost if that code has been violated. Or your insurance company may let that house burn down, and you're stuck with it. I think you need to think about that, too. It's part of the way things go.
Well, my personal experience has not been that the permits are overreaching. I mean, I'm looking at putting replacement windows in part of my house, and it does not require a permit. Yet the vendor pointed out that I should put egress windows in each, at least one in each bedroom, to keep the code. Cost is not significant in the difference, but it certainly adds a safety feature. And when you go to sell the house, it's something that a new buyer could turn around and point to and say, you need to pay for that. And so, you know, if you're going to pay for it in any way, you may as well enjoy it while you live in it. But, I mean, I'd be hard pressed to ask one of our town staff that enforces codes and writes codes which codes they don't think we need. But I think if there's something, if someone feels there's a little overreaching in their particular situation, it'd be worth review. But, you know, I haven't seen personal experience. I've just had that experience since Mr. Corcoran was here. You know, it's expensive to do work on your house. Everybody's looking to save money, but you can wind up with some bad situations.
And I've seen mortgage companies come back and say, there's no egress windows. You have to make in the cellar, change the windows to meet the codes before they will give, before they give them a mortgage.
Yeah, I mean, I was on a second-story deck once and pulled away from the house. It wasn't my house, but it didn't make me feel any better about it, you know. Fortunately, there was a tree there that stopped it. There were about 12 people on the deck. And, you know, we all got in the kitchen, but it was gone. I mean, if that tree wasn't there, we'd all end it in a heap 20 feet down.
Let me be clear on one thing. Let's say that anybody here at this table who is a principal or a primary homeowner could, under current laws, change a certain aspect about their property, a door or a porch, and up until the point where they sell it, they could, for all intents and purposes, do whatever they like with the property. Is that an accurate thing to say? But then at the point of sale, it would have to come up to code?
Well, I think the point of sale is the kicker. And I think that, you know, the reason that you look to the codes first because you, as a primary homeowner, you can do your own wiring, you can do your own plumbing, you can build your own footing walls, you can do all of that work on your own. You're not required to be licensed to do it. But wouldn't it make sense, frankly, to understand what the minimum codes are so that you're not putting yourself...
Nobody wants to eat breakfast. Of course not.
...in an unsafe situation. And that goes to ground fault interruptors in the kitchens, the ground fault interruptors in the bathrooms. All of those things weren't in place 40 years ago, and people got hurt.
I've done all that work on two different homes that I've owned in town. I've had it, not myself, because, as I said, I'm not the one who wants to explain to the fire chief at 3:00 in the morning how I saved $1,000. But I've had, you know, older homes twice in this town, and a lot of those things were just, had been upgraded and with no code, you know, observance, and just bad numbers, you know, where the box didn't meet the voltage, you know, and you had create dangers in there. So they were out there. I mean, there are definitely some situations where contractors had just bypassed what they knew was better.
So I guess my main concern, I guess, would be the second homeowner, right? In any case, because if it is your home, you can live in it however you want. That's my personal opinion, and I believe it. Especially taking into consideration that we're trying to build up a procedure to check cosmetics. Anything done to the exterior that might offend somebody else on the outside, we might have a process in place to kind of push them along and to fit into those regulations. But how do we help that second homeowner that might decide, hey, to get this deal, I have to do it without an inspection being done?
Do we perform an inspection on all houses? Do we...
No. We will, well, what we do for a certificate of occupancy when someone is buying a home, and Dan can correct me here, but we go through the files to see what historical permits have been issued. Are there any outstanding building permits? Are there outstanding, any outstanding zoning issues related to the property? If there are none, we'll certify it. We don't actually go into the single-family home and go through it with a pad.
Right.
For multiple-family dwellings, it's different. We do, I believe, make a thorough inspection because there, the code requirements take it to another level as far as renter-occupied dwellings and the safety involved therewith.
Yeah, and I guess that's where my main concerns lie. Because there's all different ways to try and buy a house and try and get the deal you want and move things along as fast as possible. And sometimes that means limiting your contingencies. And someone might think, oh, this looks good to me. I'm not going to get it checked out. The town doesn't get it checked out, and then all of a sudden, you know, their house burns down or something happens. I know we're thinking worst-case scenario. I would love to try and find a way that we can pass this and push this in the other direction, but we need to think about how we can help that second homeowner.
And there are also independent people that will do home inspections when you buy your house.
Right.
And any good real estate agent should be telling you that you get inspected before you buy it.
But it's not a lot of money, right?
There's an opportunity for it to happen, and you're right. I mean, it should be done. So maybe that's enough for us to say, it will be caught at the sale, and it will decrease the value of that sale. And then all of a sudden, they'll come to us and say, at the assessor's office, and say, hey, I bought it for $40,000 less because it's not up to code. Change it. Change my assessment as well. I mean, there's, there are all these dark alleys to go down when we're thinking about this. But I don't know what the majority is, I guess.
Leave them alone and do the individual.
I think that, yeah, I think if there's an individual case, that's my feeling. If there's a case where somebody feels that it doesn't apply, something doesn't apply. And the balance of good regulation is that you don't want to encourage people to abandon the regulations, you know.
What about the permit fee in general? Maybe people would be more receptive to come up to the town and say, listen, I want to do this to my hallway or whatever it is, and I'm going to do the work myself, but I don't want to pay you $400 to tell me that, yeah, I'm doing it right when I've done it for 20 years, where my dad taught me the trade, you know. I mean, that has to be taken into consideration as well. If they're doing it right, we shouldn't punish them.
You could look at the fee structure. I'm not that familiar with the fee structure.
I'm not either, but no matter what, a $10 fee could break the bank for someone.
How would the fees figure, Stuart?
Uh, God, I don't...
$15? Okay.
There are filing fees to go with that because permits also have to be filed in the land records.
Still, you never know. I mean, most people are living week to week, if not day to day, so...
Can we get it to five? Can we get it to five?
If they're living that frugally, they shouldn't have enough money to do any construction.
I can respect the fact that it's their home, and they can do what they want with it. And the fact that we are trying to put something in place that makes sure that they keep the outside looking good for us and the inside is how they love to live in it, I mean, that's our goal here as selectmen in Bennington.
It only comes into play when you're making a capital improvement. If you're maintaining something or fixing something, it doesn't come into play. It's when you're adding that extra room or, you know, putting, turning your porch into a bedroom or something like that. So it's not every little...
Funny with the fees, it really isn't the issue. I think it's, you know, it kind of comes down to a...
Personal choice.
Personal choice and personal freedom in something that you own without having somebody step over your shoulder and tell you whether or not you're doing a good enough job for something you own.
Yeah, I mean, I think if it was never a problem, it wouldn't exist. You know, that's where most of these things come from.
I think at a point of sale, it's really one, you know...
Let the private area, let the private sector handle it.
Then bring it up to code.
Nobody has to buy a house if they don't like the code. If they don't want to purchase it because you haven't kept it up to a certain code, then don't buy it.
Oh, I bought one.
We don't want to hear your troubles.
No, but I mean, I had it inspected. I, you know, yeah, I chose to buy it.
So where are we going with this now?
I think my suggestion would be if we have specific instances where enforcement of the code seems to be a real issue for people, we'll bring those instances to you and ask that you either... that you either exempt that particular issue from the ordinance or amend it in some way.
Can we get some information from our building inspectors about what had, what they typically do see as issues from the public with this?
Yes, I think we can do that.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good help. I mean, like, you know, I live next to somebody who's always doing something and he never seems to find a, a problem, you know, he just gets it done. But he's used to the process. I think that's also a part. I think if you're not used to the process, sometimes it feels.
Didn't we used to get those reports in our packet?
Yep.
How many permits?
The zoning permits and the zoning and all that.
Yeah, you get all of that. But I think, I think what Justin's looking for is specific instances that our inspectors run into on a regular basis where people have an issue with it.
We already get those.
We get the permits.
You get number of permits, you get violation issue, in, in, in information, you get certificate of occupancies as they're issued.
Okay.
Okay.
Somebody happy with that? So far?
Okay, thank. 2014 grand list errors and omissions. Stuart?
Uh, yes. This is being presented to you by the Board of Listers in order to amend the 2014 grand list. There is only one issue before you. This is an individual who, for whatever reason, had been unable to get processed the right veteran property tax exempt information from the Office of Veterans Affairs. Now that that paperwork is in place, the listers are recommending that you alter the assessment from 132,000 to 92,000, which is the amount that would normally be allowed by law.
So moved. What do we, we have a motion? We have a second? Any discussion?
None. All in favor?
That's unanimous.
And I do have a signature page that I'll circulate with this for you folks.
And we have a lister here.
Yes, we do.
It's just, it's about the, usually you have more than just one. This is a pretty good number.
Stuart, just before manager's report, I just wanted to jump in here. I meant, I wanna mention this earlier. October 1st is the day that the hands-free regulation goes in from the state level for driving with devices. I just wanna point that out. People are still watching. You are not allowed to use a, a cell phone or, you know, texting was already illegal, but cell phones, now you need to use a hands-free device in your car. There are fines involved, so. Manager's report, Stu?
Uh, I don't have any manager's report for you tonight, but I did hand out to you a handwritten document that came to us from one of the local contractors in town with a concern about the way a culvert was installed at Eastview Drive here in Bennington. Normally, we would, we would look for an 18-inch culvert under a roadway. I did talk with RJ after the fact. In this particular case, the old culvert, which was, I think, a 10-inch, was only about three inches below the surface of the road. So every winter, it would heave and create problems. In order to install a larger culvert there and get it at sufficient depth onto the roadway, our folks in the field made a judgment to use only a 12-inch PVC culvert. The PVC will allow water to flow more freely. It allowed us to install the culvert at an appropriate depth below the roadway. But it also allowed us not to dig a, an additional two-foot trench along the front yard of an adjoining property. We were able to ta- sort of taper. Tailor that to meet the existing drainage way by using a smaller-sized culvert. It's not normally something that we would do, but in this particular case, the folks in the field thought it was important in order to preserve the surrounding property appearances to do it this way. So the contractor that brought us to our attention just wanted to make sure that you folks were aware that this change had been made and it actually does not meet our minimum standards.
There's a full French drain on the other side of that street, too.
I believe there is.
This is Stank Street, Blake. A French drain?
French drain?
You know the French drain?
No, we don't.
It's all stone. It's a stone building, all filled with stone.
The French invented?
They kept it over and installed it.
I just wanted to make sure that we talked about this and I, I got that information to you since he had asked that I present this on his behalf. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. I'm gonna start other business just quickly. Our next scheduled meeting is Columbus Day Monday. We've talked with a couple people who are looking at being here that, that are not available. I'm gonna be out of town, but I just wanted to see if the board wanted to try and reschedule that. Stuart and I talked about October 6th, but that is the, the follow-up on the Governor's Opiate Forum, which is right here at 6:00.
That's right.
Which is a, a good meeting to attend.
Did you do it earlier?
We could do a town meet, town hall.
We could do it at town hall before that and come here. We could do it another evening, so.
Uh, Dan, in fact, had a planning commission meeting scheduled actually for that time. And I think he's made arrangements to change his meeting. So we could meet at 5:15 or 5:30 at the Town Office Conference Room. It's really just a meeting. Because we are required to meet twice a month, it would be a meeting to sign warrants and discuss any other business that you folks might have. So it could be very quick.
I'd agree with that.
Is the board agreeable to that?
I'd like to go to, I wanna go to that forum.
So on the 6th.
There's a chance I might be.
A tad late or not here?
Not, not here.
We're just gonna do, it's just gonna be something for warrants. I don't know if I'll be able to make it at that time.
Is a quorum required?
Yes, we need a quorum in order to meet, yes.
Can you do a telephonic?
I'll be there.
I'll be here.
Michael, we're here. If we warrant it that way, I believe we can.
No problem. It's good. We'll change.
Set it for 5:15?
5:15, sounds good. And you're, do you say you're gonna be doing it electronically, Tom, or?
No, I'm gonna be here.
Oh, just anyone?
I was just thinking for our quorum.
So that's a quorum, okay. Okay, other business. John?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up an article I was reading this weekend, kind of a blast from the past at this point. But it was more information on Plisant's decision to move. The article was obviously in, in good spirits. It was mostly about the move to Michigan and, and the growth that they'll see there. And it, it kinda gave me a little, a better perspective as to how we lost. And obviously, it's not necessarily the town of Bennington, but I think it might shape something that we wanna push towards our, our delegation in terms of what we need to have our companies improve. Just to give you some of the highlights, there's a $29 million project, so talk about a boost to the economy, set out to expand and to reevaluate their current building, which was built in, or which was occupied in 2011. That's kind of when the chain of events started. They decided to move to Michigan for one reason or another. If you do know or you don't know, this was the headquarters. It's no longer the headquarters. But within two to three years, there'll be 620 new jobs guaranteed. And if you look at that from a revenue standpoint, from the state, if those were $12-an-hour jobs, and I know, I'm, I'm pretty sure a lot of our manufacturing facilities have a $12 on the, on the low side anyway. That would end up being $550,000 to the state. So maybe these are the numbers that we can use to try and pitch that, hey, this would've been nice. The bottom line is, is that the stimulus package that was offered was $6 million. So if those were all $12 jobs, even though we all know it's not, it's probably closer to an average of 15 to 18, the return to the state for giving that money is, is less than 10 years. It's actually 11 years at $12 an hour, but considering the spillover, it's, it would be less. Again, this is more of just a, a reading on my own. But on top of that, when you look at the, the salaries paid, $12 an hour, after, after federal taxes, state taxes, Medicare, Social Security and all that good stuff, there would be 11.5 million dollars in the pockets of those people working to spend wherever. So on housing, on food, on anything whatsoever. I don't know if these are the numbers that we need to do. I don't really understand our position and what we're capable of. But I know when I was initially pushing this economic development, obviously, the town of Bennington can't just pull a $6 million bill out of their pocket. So my question, I guess, here is.
Or the state of Vermont either, you know.
Well, then you have to start to consider the, can you not afford to do this, right? That's always, it always has to be the second question. So what can we do as a town to say that if we have a company that's looking to expand and do all these things, how do we push them? And I don't know that answer.
Where's that article from? And where did Plisant?
It's plastic news. So it's talking about the composite industry.
Where did Plisant move to?
They moved to.
Michigan.
They're in Michigan.
We've got barely 700,000 people in the, in the state and more than half of them are above the age of 50 years old. And Michigan's population, I would gather, I would guess, is around, what? 50, 20 million?
I, I wouldn't guess because I have no idea. But, but I would ask you this. Do you remember when NSK came to town with 600 to 700 jobs?
I don't.
And, and the question always was, how do you fill these jobs? And guess what? They filled them and they trained people and they gave people good jobs so then they could buy quality homes in, in various areas of the town. So to say that we don't have it available, guess what? People are gonna come. People come for jobs. They travel all the time. I know people traveling hours.
I think your point is good. It, it doesn't always have to be on that scale either.
No, absolutely not.
Not everybody's gonna be like a 6 million, but, but there is trade-off and there is negotiation. I mean, you have Plisant left here to move closer to their market. And on top of that, the towns on the receiving end apparently had a little, you know, competition to get them and, and put together quite a package for them. So, you know, that's going on out there and you have to be aware of it. If you want people to land on your airfield, you have to, you know, you have to be ready to receive and do something.
Right. So what, what can we do in terms of, we, we always talk about the need to try and stimulate our economic situation and I hate to sit idly by, but.
Well, one of the things that I've been, suggested to me and I've said before is, is that you, you identify what your unfair advantage is. You know, in, in Walker, Michigan, their unfair advantage is that they've got the, the three carmakers right there for this particular case.
That was mentioned once in the decision to move there. It was, it was mentioned when telling Bennington why they couldn't stay here because it's very nice.
Well, that's why they went to Michigan. I think why they landed in Walker particularly is probably, you know, but, but what is it, what, what do we do to draw them and then sweeten the deal or make that happen? I think that's, that's all part of the question.
I think John's raising some good discussion points, topics, because Vermont is a non-friendly business state. And we can have a superstar of recruitment right here in town. But frankly, unless you have a state that's gonna stand behind you, have regulations that meet, you know, the businesses' need and don't make it so difficult to come, we're just spitting into the wind, as it were. And I think we just can't sit. I think, as you said, you know, our legislatures, we have to go to Montpelier, the Select Board and say, governor and your economic development team, you're not looking and you're not hearing. And it's time for you to do that. Cause I think that's really where we need.
And how can we, yeah, exactly. And how do we say something and make a statement loud enough to say that we're unhappy about this? And, and it could cost us more by not investing in the town of Bennington in this, in this case as it is. And then every case will be different. Like you said, it's not gonna be a $6 million package. But guess what? If we were able to sit at the table and we had the money, are they gonna stay in an area that they've already, you know, bought property in, they have the property available to expand in? We do have engineers an hour away. We do have engineers two and a half hours away in a massive radius. So the fact is, people could come here. The buildings would fill up. And that might be the easier business decision from their standpoint. Instead of uprooting everybody, offering significant, you know, packages to the people that are losing their jobs, offering people to relocate. So there's a lot that we would offer to, to maintain that relationship. It's always cheaper to, to hold on to a relationship than to develop a new one. So.
Absolutely.
We can't watch this happen again, is my point. And I don't know how, as a board, we can make a statement loud enough for them to hear us in Montpelier. And that's my question. It's not particular to this, this case.
I, I think there are three issues. Number one, and, and one that I, you really can't prove, but it always seems to me that when economic development opportunities come in from outside the state to Montpelier, it, it feels very often as though they get shunted towards the northwestern part of the state. Number two, a lot of the northwestern part of the state now has the value chain, the supply chain components that, that we don't have. And, and that's, that's a big deal. You also see the same thing over in Malta, New York. The supply chain is around it. And the third thing is, we have to, we're going to have to make a lot of noise. I remember when Peter Shumlin, only four years ago, was elected governor of Vermont, he pledged that he would be spending a lot of time and putting a lot of focus into southwestern Vermont. I think it's, I haven't seen a lot of that this past year and a half or two. I'd like to call him on that. And I think we have to call him on that. The more we're in Montpelier, the better it is for us. So it's, everybody's gonna have to learn the drive up there.
I mean, that is a flip. We're, we are going to the Manufacturing Supply Chain Show in Essex on Thursday. We're the graphic sponsor. I don't know if it's a financially wise thing, but I think, you know, it's one of those things. We complain they don't come down here. So every now and then you gotta go up there and put your flag up. And, and I'm really happy to see that Apicus is gonna be there and Command Composites is gonna be there. There's people from Brattleboro, there's people from Wilmington. So, you know, we, we have to do our part and show up when we have an opportunity and, and get those supply chains down. And the economic development people from the state will be there. So, you know, that's when you grab them aside and start, start the harping, as they say.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm wondering if we can do something with a letter to the right person at, from the board as a whole. Because funny enough, this, this $6 million lines up with a, a project that was recently passed here in Bennington to try and help people afford housing. 620 people with good jobs wouldn't be able to, to live in those houses, right? If they were a couple. So, I mean, there's enough push, I think, that we, there's enough, enough evidence to support the need for some sort of package to be offered, whether it be a $6 million price tag for people to expand here in Bennington, or a $10 million price tag, $5 million price tag for new people to come here. But people need to know and understand that if you want to, if you are looking to expand and you're going to offer up something, we're here to play too. So again, the question is, are, are we willing to write a letter to start with or push some, something towards, towards the state of Vermont?
I think a letter is a nice idea, but really, you know, we need to get on our legislators and the people that represent us and get in their face.
Yeah, well, I mean, we have people.
I think we could get 1,000 signatures together and send it up to the representatives up in Montpelier and see if they listen to us on this one.
But they could, yeah, I mean, contact with the legislature and contact with those agencies is important. And, yeah, I, you know, I don't have a problem drafting a letter to our legislators
I think, I, I think.
It's a good start.
It, it probably isn't a bad idea to have some of those folks come down here. Pat Moulton, who is now the Secretary of ACCD, Lisa Goslin, who is the, the Commissioner of Economic Development. They come down to meet with businesses. They should come down and meet with Select Board. Spend an hour or two with us.
What I'd like to see is, I'd like to see.
Come to this Select Board at a meeting.
Exactly. So why did Bennington miss out on this? And what are you doing to make sure it doesn't happen again? They, they should answer for it since we can't. To our people, we can't answer for that. We don't have the money. It comes from the state.
And they're very aware of that transaction.
Well, they're very aware, but that microphone stands very empty.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, they should have an answer. They should have something because they, they know about it. And every time I go up there, they talk about the composites and all that stuff. They all know about it and watch it. So we've had the Agency of Commerce here, you know, they took the bus trip down last year.
It's a visit. It's a, it's a time to shake hands, to smile and take some pictures. What we're looking for, though, is some sort of action. And I'm not saying it has to be tomorrow. I don't think it can be.
No.
But I, I don't know the right step. If I knew the right step, I'd start taking it.
Well, we should start talking about what we wanna do as a step. I think you're right. I mean, the Economic Development Task Force, I would assume, has an opinion on this.
Yes.
Maybe it's time to have a little, invite them in and see where they're at with it and come up with a strategy.
And along with BCIC, which is industrial.
Yeah, well, they're represented in that task force.
And have a, a forum of sorts so that we can vent, but also look, get some.
But get us up to speed on what is happening and then translate that into some kind of state.
Right. Because the truth is, without the right tools, all of these groups that we have that are, are trying to push an agenda for the town of Bennington, they're handcuffed. And that's not fair to judge them on that and looking at economic goals that we might set for our town manager and his staff. It's not fair if they don't have what they need.
Right. Okay. Thank you, John. Justin, you have any?
Nothing.
Jim?
A few things. First of all, I wanna express my thanks to Mr. and Mrs. Ira Wagner, who are former SVC alumna. Ira's a former alumnus of.
I'm still a alumni.
Yes. Yes, he formally went to SVC. How about that? Who not only purchased the former gatehouse at the, at SVC, but he rehabbed it, spending approximately $600,000. And I was privileged enough to do all the finished painting up there. And I, if I do say so myself, it looks fantastic. It really does. Pat was up there. But anyway, what I really wanna do is just express my gratitude to Mr. and Mrs. Wagner. What an incredibly generous thing to do for the people of Bennington and, and SVC in general. And if you get a chance, go up there and take a look at it. It's just, it's gorgeous.
Would you like a letter from the board?
I think that'd be a great idea, Tom. I really do.
It's pretty impressive.
I think we should like to draft that? No, I think I'll leave that up to you.
Why don't you draft the letter, Jim?
Present for our signature because.
Absolutely.
Get me the proper spelling of their name, et cetera.
W-A-G-N-E-R, Ira.
Like your IRA.
Jessica is his wife's name. Ira and Jessica. Second thing, Stu, at, at. Second thing, Stu, at our meeting, I think, two meetings ago, we talked about, Timmy Corcoran came here and talked about the ordinance with respect to farm stands. I didn't see anything in our packet about how we're going to try to address that and be a little bit more flexible about that. When are we going to do that?
Well, that's up to us, actually.
I thought I got the question, just because this meeting was full, so I'm assuming we do it at our next meeting.
Yeah, pretty much, and I also want to look into what, where it steps on the state rules.
Yeah.
The state does have designations on off-site signage and where it can be.
Get all that together and have it for maybe a.
Yeah, so maybe.
For temporary signage, like the, the farmer's market, who gets to put a sign out.
Right.
If this guy were to put out a similar sign or remove it at the end of the day.
Yeah.
You know, as long as he's not intruding on.
On the right way.
Right, right, rights of way, and/or on other people's property, at least for a short period of time.
And that's what you'd have to establish, is what is that period of time? And we have temporary signage rules, but this would be, this would be a new, a new wrinkle, really, you figure out what that would be, if someone were to comply to that.
I'll, I'll address that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the state would, might be receptive in that as well, for agricultural cases and things like that, where you have a stand pops up for two, three months.
And finally, the last thing that came to my attention from a constituent, a property owner here in Bennington, who lives adjacent to the baseball and football field up on Beach Street, and she came to me and said, or wrote to me via email, that there, you know, team members, mostly men, who are using the, while they're playing football or drinking alcohol, and they're relieving themselves on the property adjacent to her, and she claims that, you know, during warmer weather and windy days, the odor of.
Yeah, we get it.
Being relieved, you got it. In addition to that, you know, the, the people that are coming to watch the game and/or play